We're live, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, welcome back, everybody. We're out of our executive at 11:16. I'm gonna make the motion that we proceed with interest in real property.
I'll second that.
The motion is second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'm gonna go let Scott, because he's been waiting for 45 minutes.
Aye. See you back at 1:00. You got it?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Hey Scott, come on in, apologize for us being so late. Doug just piles it on us all day long and we can't keep up.
He tends to do that, huh?
Just wanted to remind you, we are live, so this time you have a presentation as an action item. I'm assuming we're doing your contract? What are we doing?
So, we've got the contract. I think all this really was is, I scheduled this as kind of a precaution. I have to do an annual report to the PDC and...
Are those not working down there, Doug?
Or take money?
Uh, yeah, they are.
For reminding me, hang on.
So, and you all don't have to...
Those are directional mics, you gotta speak straight into them.
Okay.
Up your lips over the top.
Sing, sing while you're there, too.
You don't want to hear me sing. So, the commissioners don't have to sign off on that, clerk doesn't have to sign off on that. That's me sending it directly to the PDC and send a copy to the commissioners. I'll send a copy to Doug for dissemination to the ADJ and Boise and the PDC. Just, I was, this was more of a heads up, and I, per my contract, I'm allowed to bring on an investigator or an expert for up to $5,000 for either one. I am gonna be retaining an investigator, and I just wanted to give you all a heads up, I'm doing that. I don't know if it's gonna go over that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And so, it's a guy I've talked to before, who is willing to come up to Valley County. So, it's for, and there's a vehicular manslaughter case, I'm sure you've seen in the paper. So, office has been assigned to, so to investigate that, there's loads of evidence to go through. So, it's just kind of a heads up as much as anything else. Down the line, obviously, if I have to exceed that budget, I'll be, I'll be doing a motion with the court and then coming to you to give you a heads up. I don't know if we're there yet, he hasn't even started to see the, I just got, I just got the discovery a couple of weeks ago, so it's just where we're at. So, it's just more of a heads up than anything else about what's kinda going on.
So, you're, you're in charge of the case?
Yes.
And the stuff you're sending to P, the Public Defense Commission, all that, that's your year-end stats? Is that what that is?
Year-end stats, case numbers.
Case numbers, caseload, all that stuff, okay.
Yeah.
Just write myself a note. Anything else?
That's it.
Well, that was easy.
It's easy, right?
You said that was five grand in that budget?
Five grand, yeah.
There's 10,000 that's been budgeted for Mr. Chairman and commissioners, but he is indicating that he's going to be seeking 5,000 of that.
Okay, just write myself a note here.
Right, it's, I, basically what the contract allows me to do is just retain somebody without permission for anything 5,000 or less, for either, or investigator or expert. I rarely have to dip into that, but that's why you get one of those kind of cases.
It happens, it happens. Okay, well, thank you again, apologize for being late, making you wait so long.
Don't worry, stuff happens, I'm here for court, so...
Okay, well, we didn't make you late.
Thanks, have a good one.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Annette, come on up. Your next on the agenda, this is not an action item, this is a workshop to discuss the formal process for impact fees. You got it all figured out?
I hope you got it.
No, Doug does. I don't receipt the funds in.
All right, Doug?
I have a general idea of how it needs to take place, yeah. I think the question that the building department has is if an individual is coming in and is either declining or refusing or questioning the impact fee, what is the process for the building department? That's my understanding, is a concern that the building department has, but I have just heard that third-hand.
So, many wouldn't sign the building permit.
The process that needs to, we heard, the commissioners heard, and I heard, that that process, if you get a, an individual that is questioning or declining to pay the impact fees, your responsibility is to refer them to the fire department in which they reside. So, if they're, you're building a building, a residential building or a commercial building in the side of Cascade, they are notified that here are your building permit fees, here are your impact fees, and they begin questioning that, or you refer them to Cascade.
You don't fight that about one.
You don't, you're not responsible. The next, again, if it's in Donley, it would be the Donley Fire Department and McCall, the same.
So, do you have like a map that shows the fire district, so you can really pinpoint that down?
We do, um, that was one another question. There's some areas out there that are not in a fire district, over on West Mountain, some of them parcels.
So, you're gonna need to know those, too? If they're not in a district, they don't pay the impact fee?
Well, let's see.
Isn't someone whitetail?
It's not EMS, we don't do whitetail, anyway.
Whitetail or black fox, and that is not in the fire district?
Some of it is not.
And then there's some down in Smith Ferry that's not? I think it's, uh...
And I think those areas where new buildings are being constructed, if they do not reside in a fire district, you will be, not be required to provide them with an impact fee, but I guess your concern is, is you're gonna be having to make that determination.
Right, and, yeah, and that's fine, but, you know, that was one of the questions, if they're not in, I guess they don't pay.
They don't, they don't pay.
They don't pay an impact fee.
Makes sense.
That's all that was.
I'm assuming.
Yeah.
But you get, you're gonna have to have pretty detailed maps.
And we do have, around our DIS system. Our DIS, but they're easy enough to read, but didn't, did we work on her? Didn't figure that out?
But I would, I would work more on the areas that aren't in the district and make sure you got those really nailed down on a map somewhere, because that's where the rub's gonna come.
We've got a few questions.
Okay.
Um, we get people that will pay for their permit and then decide they're not building. Where do we do that?
Do they get a refund?
They get 80% of the permit fee and no plan review.
Right, and that's okay. They cover our expenses.
They pay their impact fee, what if they want, I mean, am I gonna send them to the fire? I don't think we should have...
So, they paid, you were talking about, somebody came in and get a building permit, they have paid the impact fee and then they change their mind? So, wow.
When are those fees paid? Are they paid at, at the time the application for a building is done or after, or during construction? I apologize, I am not familiar enough.
Everything is paid when the permit is issued.
When the permit is issued, which means they can begin construction. So, you're saying that you have individuals that get a permit, begin construction, and then say, "We don't want to build anymore"?
They may have began construction, maybe they sold it, or maybe they decided not to build, so they want a refund, you know, something like that.
We see that in the construction industry where they do just that. Sometimes it's because of the interest rates, stuff has went up beyond the ability for them to build, and then they back out, because we'll see that trickle down to us, and oh, you, they're not doing this job. And the contractor will tell us that, and it's like, okay, we scratched that one off, but how does that work?
But I would assume, if somebody half-started and you went in and did half the work and then they shut down, you still gotta pay your...
That's a whole different deal.
And we're not gonna refund that either.
Well, what if they decide not to build? I mean, we get a lot that pick up their permits and, you know, a week later, a month later, six months later, whatever, I can't afford to build that.
So, we would have to set it up with the fire districts to go back and say, hey, this guy is not gonna build ever, ever, never, we need that money back.
So, what would be their responsibility?
How's that gonna work?
I don't know, I think we need to discuss that with legal, that is definitely a question that needs to be addressed. I, I guess from the stance that I, I don't know, I don't even want to comment. I mean, I, I wanna say that unfortunately, that that impact fee would be collected, it would be dispersed to the fire department, and then if the individual chose not to proceed, I think they're out of that money, but, but I don't know, I think legal...
But then, you know, a lot of times you get somebody who, they bought that property, they're gonna build something else, so that's two impact fees.
So, Doug, we can make the impact fees non-refundable?
I, I, I don't know if we have the ability to do that.
Or that's gonna have to be on the fire department, that's a conversation. I think we're gonna have to list some of these and have a workshop with them to figure out some of this stuff through legal. But, Annette, if somebody comes in and we, they are ready to go and then back out, okay? And how long does that permit remain valid? Is it six months, is it a year? One year to do one inspection. They have how many years? One year to get one inspection done. Okay, so, it's on our books, they come in a year from now and withdraw. Why are we giving back funding when we've done all of our work? We're not, we don't refund a plan review fee, so that doesn't get refunded to them. And the building permit fee is for inspections and... Okay. And they haven't received any inspections or administration or... So, say that year is gone, they don't do that, and then they come back in and reapply for a different building, smaller, different design, whatever that is. Then we charge a plan review fee again, we charge building fees again, and what we're saying is, is if they didn't get rebated the impact fee the first time, we would be putting it back on a second time. So...
How often does that happen, though?
Yeah. It happens, some, yeah.
Couple of times, three times a year, five times a year?
We've got one right now, but that was probably gonna withdraw.
Enough to be a good question.
Yeah, so, write that one down, we need clarity from legal.
Need to talk to the fire chiefs on that one.
It would be ideal if they just got the refund from fire.
That's what they'll have to, because we're, we're turning them over.
We, our plan is to turn it over every month. Any impact fees that are collected, it is the clerk's office plan to turn those over every month during their tax turnover.
So, Doug, is there gonna be like a claim that we approve, or is that just some automatic?
It's just like the tax turnover process.
Okay, okay.
Where you, the commissioners don't see that.
We don't see that.
The money's collected by the treasurer, turned over to us, and then we disperse it to the taxing district. This is gonna be very similar, the building department's gonna collect that impact fee with their turnover, because they do have daily turnover that they turn over to the clerk's office for permit fees, plan review fees, and there's gonna be a separate column for impact fees that they will turn that over to us. We will keep that in the taxing districts, the fire departments account their GL for dispersment during tax turnover remittance.
Is there any interest earned on that account?
There is not.
We won't have to have that file?
There's no interest, no.
So, Annette, how do you handle a multiplex condominium, is that one permit for the building or is there a whole bunch of permits?
It's a, if somebody builds a apartment building, it's one permit.
Okay. And what, I'm assuming...
If they're selling the things or two double, a duplex. Condomizing them? I mean, that's, that was a question I was gonna ask you guys.
Because that would be two impact fees or just one?
Or one building permit fee? One, if it's an apartment and it's one developer, I guess it'd be one.
Yeah. And what about garages and sheds?
And that's a question, we got garages and sheds, a lot of people turn them into living. The way I understood on the impact fees, garages, on my paperwork here, garages and sheds are not included, but what do you do when they turn them into living?
And they would have to come back in and be inspected and have to pay the impact fee if you catch them, which means you have to work with the assessor and the appraisers if they catch them.
Is there a conversion permit? We don't let them turn sheds into living. We can do a garage if they get us all the information, yeah.
Same, we're seeing, I'm seeing, maybe you are too, more one big giant shop with an apartment in one end. A lot of people are really liking those, and I'm going...
We call it residence with an attached garage, is that what it is?
That would be a residential permit that you're issuing then.
And then we're also doing commercial, right?
And then if we catch somebody converting a shed, they get some kind of a fee, some kind of a fine, and then they have to convert. Well, we really don't let them convert because we gotta see them being built, we don't know, they got the two-by-six walls, we don't know. Right. No. If they got this, they got that. So, we wouldn't have to worry about a shed, then? We're not gonna allow them to occupy it, we're not letting them, unless you guys change that.
Well, it's, it's a matter of how you know it, how do you find that?
I mean, yeah, is, is that where you work with the planning and zoning department to conduct, let me guess, a code enforcement review, or, I mean, that's just where...
It's us, we do that.
That's the building department, so when you're...
We don't, and go inspect sheds. Well, we're gonna start doing setbacks, I should, I'll take that back. We haven't done it yet, but we're gonna start looking at setbacks. But, you know, we, right now, we can write somebody a letter and say, hey, you got a wood stove pipe coming out, you got a dish on your place, you know, whatever, it appears that you're living in it. Oh, no, we're not. We can't say, well, you're lying, you know what I mean, we can't call them a liar.
But actually, until, isn't it plumbing and all that? You can have a wood stove in your shop, your shop.
Some of them, you can tell. That's a whole different conversation than today.
That's gonna be a tough one, and there's always gray areas. What else you got?
Okay, if they have ADU from Cinda, you know, they pay for one house, and then they got another house, two houses on the property, is it each house, is that how they're gonna do it, or... Each livable residence. Okay. And is Tyler Technologies gonna have something on it for us to do that, or, like when we enter our permits?
That's a question that we're gonna have to ask. Absolutely.
So, how you gonna do it till you get that answer, you have some kind of a form, you can just, or another...
There's like a, when they turn over, they're turning over to us right now, there's a spreadsheet that they're providing us, and then on that spreadsheet, they'll just be in a district, an additional column that says, "Impact fees," when they're turning over. And that gives, that sparks us to say, hey, this needs to go into the fire department's account for dispersment.
Manufactured homes. They're typically, just say, for example, about 500 bucks for the permit, plan review, everything. This is Cascade alone's adding $2,876 onto that. Is there gonna be any type of exemptions or not? Unfortunately, these are the ones that get caught in all of this. And unless we actually waive every impact fee for a property under so much, and then come up with county funds in order to pay for that impact fee, you gotta charge everybody. It's a residential unit. That's the ones that hurt the most.
How do you treat the ones down leisure time, are they getting...
We don't do leisure time, that's Cascade.
That's something like that, would be a building permit fee or that's just a...
If it's a park model, we don't do it.
Concrete inspection?
Now, for a manufactured home, you're gonna, you're gonna look at the concrete and you're gonna do a final.
But you, you issue a building permit for that, is that what I'm understanding, you said?
But something like leisure time, a park model, we would not.
Just because it's a manufactured home, it's already been inspected, it's already...
It's a park model.
Yeah.
It's just like an RV.
It's inspected at the plan, isn't it?
A modular home is inspected at the plan.
Yeah.
There's just a few, you know, things that's... Impact fees make affordable housing, that's important.
Yeah.
List of contacts, you were gonna get me a list of contacts for people to, I'll follow up with fire chiefs.
You have all that, you have all that information?
No, my understanding it was gonna be the office managers, I believe, or I don't know if they were gonna designate someone.
They were supposed to designate who they wanted to get those calls, so...
So, would you just contact them, have them email that contact information to you? Because I know Cascade is Pam DeChambeau would be...
Oh, okay.
Use the treasurer for Cascade. But I don't know who it is for Donley and McCall.
Okay, I think that's all I got. What about you?
Good question for Doug, on the turnover, are we gonna have just one account number to put all the impact fees in, or are you gonna have us kind of keep track of each district and have more than one account number?
What we'll do, what will need to be identified is what district the impact fee or the building permit is for, for what fire district it is. So, on the form, if you can just let us know that, what fire district it is that the impact fee is being collected for, and then you won't need to know the account number, we'll make sure to identify what account number that is. We can definitely provide it to you, though, so you can just have it seated, so you know what a general ledger number we're gonna be putting that in.
Would it help to have a separate check for the impact fee versus the building?
I don't think so. Yeah, I don't think that would...
We'll just break it up on our receipt for them.
Okay, okay, you have the building receipts.
I think the most important thing, Marsh, is we know, you know the amount, because it's gonna be different for each fire district, right, or, so we make sure that that's accurate when you're doing your, you know, double, triple checking, and then, again, as I indicated, when you're turning it over to us, if you can just let us know what fire district the impact fee is for, and we can provide you with the GL that it's gonna be going into. Yeah, I know, absolutely, this is...
Well, the challenge will come is if this new EMS board changes that impact fee.
Well, no.
Fire district, fire district.
It's the fire district impact fee.
If they change that fee through one year to the next, and hopefully that won't happen.
I don't, I don't think they can, though, I think that, I don't know, I, I think that might have to go through another former public hearing, yeah.
Home public hearing and all that, it's a fee, so you have to probably, right?
I don't know, though.
I'll be okay there.
I think that's all I got.
Anything else? I'll follow you.
I think that's it, you got anything else?
Are you sure you're good?
I'm good, I had all my questions answered.
Well, and, and if you get into a rubber concern or something, come back to us and we'll try to figure it out. It's a new thing, gonna be some wrinkles.
We just, I think from my, my point of view, I just like things to be kind of standardized across the board, if there's a way to do it, what's good for the goose, good for the gander, you know?
I get it, yeah. Now, a yurt, that's another question, a yurt. People are living in those, are we doing that as an impact fee?
You issue a building permit?
It's a yurt.
Residential unit, I mean, you gotta think of it like residential units.
People, there's people that live in them year-round.
Okay, I'm just making sure, so, when that question comes up, we got an answer. The one's another question, gotta go to a mic.
I saw that hand.
I missed the first part because I was listening for the door click and didn't hear it. So, did you get the question answered about if someone's house burns down, do they have to then pay an impact fee? No, I didn't ask that. I mean, you're living in a house, it burns down, do you have to pay an impact fee then?
I wouldn't think so.
But, again, that's a legal question for their counsel. I mean, because they're gonna build a brand-new and it might be a different owner, same thing. I mean, is it a replacement permit for the house that was there? No, it would be a structural permit for a new house, but they already have that dwelling unit established. They sell the lot to somebody else. Well, there is already a dwelling unit there.
Well, that's a new world.
It's never been, the impact fee's never been paid, if my house burns down, I rebuild it next month. Do we charge building permit? Do we charge, you know, I mean, what, that, it's a one-off, that is a conversation that would need to be one that if someone didn't want to pay it, a waiver would need to be sought, because those are all individual conversations. They're not, that's not a one-off conversation for everybody.
Your house burns down and you're gonna rebuild, I'd say, maybe not impact fees, but I'd definitely building permit fees, because your building's their home, you know? Regardless of it burnt or not.
What did you guys decide on the yurt, sorry, I had to step out?
A residential unit.
Were they inspected? Say anything, it's gotta be inspected, they're gonna have to pay it. Then you want, like, you want to add something here, I could tell.
Oh, yeah, I've just been asked, I asked a question about whether or not if your house burns down, like, if your house burned down, would you then have to pay an impact fee?
I wouldn't think that would be very fair, because you've already paid it on the original structure.
Well, if you didn't, though. It's already in the calculations.
You don't pay any property tax on it until you rebuild it.
What if they sell the lot and it's somebody new? What if they sell the lot and it's somebody new?
Then somebody new builds a house, yeah. But you're not gonna get your insurance unless you rebuild your house.
What if they had, you know, 1,000 square feet, and now they're gonna add 10,000 square feet and the impacts are greater? What our conversation was, is I think they would need to come in for a waiver, or at least a different conversation, because it's not a one-size-fits-all.
If your house burns down, and you're gonna rebuild it, you rebuild it bigger, or even bigger.
More people, now you've decided you're gonna do a VRBO, and the impacts are that much greater. But we don't charge separately for a VRBO.
If you're gonna do VRBO, you definitely get an impact.
I'm looking at impact.
Well, I know we, we stopped collecting property tax on the houses burned down for the rest of that year, or until they build something new, because it's kind of a hardship for most people to have their house burned down.
And we would definitely want to waive those, but you can't make policy, you know, for the one- or twosies that come along, it really needs to be a conversation at that moment in time, but we said they really need to check with their legal counsel, the fire department's legal counsel, because that needs to come from them. Is there a waiver in there already? Is legislation already in place to drive that conversation?
This is their impact fee.
Yeah.
We have to hit with them on that one.
Unfortunately, it falls on you guys to determine if you can collect it or not, or should be collecting it or not, but I think, as the commissioners are indicating, we need to get clarification.
And you got a good point on addition, you know, what if somebody's adding an extra... Two houses now, instead of just one, what if they're gonna do a main house?
Adding a bedroom.
Addition onto their house, yeah.
Adding on to a bedroom.
A thousand more square feet, or... I don't think it included that. I don't think it included that either, but, again, a lot of these are gonna come from their legal counsel, because there is things in statute already, I mean, this is being replicated throughout the country. These conversations have already been had, and they've already been determined, probably through legislation. I asked McCall chief, you know, is there any exemptions at all, and he said, no. Well, again, through legal statute, there, there has to be something there, so they need to, you need to ask the questions, give them to them, go let them, their legal counsel, you know, make decisions and come back with their decision, and we just abide by their decisions.
I would assume that anything you gotta inspect would have to be an impact fee.
Well, a garage we have to inspect.
Yeah.
I think it was new residences, we just need to read that.
That's, that's when we're gonna have to ferret out, that's a really good question. If I had a bedroom on the back of my house, would I get a pay any impact fee? We need to find that one out.
And again, this is being done all over Idaho. Those conversations have already been had and answered, and probably through court. Let them make the decisions, alls we're doing isn't... Impacting, doing it. We're collecting the fees for it, we're not making the decisions for them. Because then we're gonna be at risk if there is a bad decision made. We don't want to do that, let their legal counsel make that decision. Some sort of meeting before this goes into effect, in my opinion, because we're gonna get these questions. And issue a permit, we don't know if we can.
It's in an effect now, when we approved it, it's...
No, we can't collect the fees, though, yet.
I thought the day that we approved it, it started.
No.
30 days, passer.
So, November 16th.
Just give us some...
Give me, give me your list, I'm writing an email to them on the contact information. All right, I'll email you a list, I got... That's great.
Perfect.
We'll, we'll get full clarity and, and we may have to write up some kind of a policy around it, just so that... But the policy is, we're collecting your impact fees, we're not making legal decisions on your behalf. We shouldn't have to make decisions at all on it.
No, that's where you push it back to them.
Have you had conversations with the McCall Building Department? Because they're gonna have to collect the fees for permits within the city limits, as well as Donley, as, sorry, Donley doesn't have, as well as the city of Cascade, I would also reach out to them.
I've talked to McCall a little bit. Donley will have to also. Donley's gonna have to do it, too. They have an impact fee on my paper.
Who issues a building permit in the city of Donley?
Right.
They do. We just do the...
Well, they do, you do the inspections, though.
And the inspections, they issue the permit, all the money, everything, got you. We do plan review and permits for the city of Donley? We do the plan review and inspections. And we're not, we are not getting any...
There's compensation.
Yeah, we get paid for plan, what are they, 720 bucks now?
It depends, it's, I think it's, we get all the plan review and 80% of the plan fee, I think, yeah.
But there's not a lot of new buildings that go on within the city.
But they're gonna need to know how to do this process as well.
Oh, they are shortly.
It's one of the cities.
Need to have that conversation, because they've got big stuff coming in. Well, they'll have to adopt their own ordinance.
They already did.
City of Donny did, the impact fees? I think Steve said they did.
I think Steve said they did.
They did.
Yeah, I think all three cities did.
I know Cascade did, I didn't know that.
They did.
Donny did.
All three did, that was part of it.
All right, yeah, we'll get this typed up. So. I have a couple other questions about these impact fees, as far as planning and zoning. Can they prepay these impact fees? You know, if a developer wants to prepay all the lots as. I mean, can they prepay them?
Add it to an N S list.
Okay.
I'm not making decisions.
Oh, I thought you were doing the email right now.
Do you collect prepaid fees now?
Put it to.
I would say, I mean, that's gonna be a decision, yeah.
If it's prepayment, then they're gonna prepay you, not us.
And then we'd give it to Doug.
And you're gonna have to notify the building department that this developer has prepaid these impact fees, that we're not double collecting, I guess.
I would say we shouldn't take prepaid, so that should be when the building permits filed for is when it's paid then.
Agreed.
We're gonna mess up the system.
Okay, I agree with that too, cause it could be years before they come in for anything, and the impact fees could have changed by then. Well, it might be one of those, you know, hey, all the impact fees are prepaid, it might be one of those tactics that they use. So then, uh, if they want to build a firehouse. The fire department, is that just a negotiation with the, the fire department? They can let us know to waive those fees or something?
Charge themselves an impact fee.
It's a commercial.
Well, if the developer, as, as part of their.
Oh, if a developer wants to build and.
Of impacts.
Again, that's up to them, I mean, alls we're doing is collecting on our, we're not making decisions for all of that. So I would make a list, put it together with an N S, and we'll email it off and let them answer those things.
Storage units, they build ten storage units, each one's paying an impact fee?
No, that's based on square footage.
It's a bear, it's a.
It's all, it's one thing.
Each building.
Like Tamrac just did the, the fire station.
Is considered a.
Structure, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That's based on the square footage, right?
Commercial is based on.
Oh, yeah, good.
We're collecting fees, we're not making legal decisions for them.
These questions I think are gonna come up, that's why I'm asking.
Agreed, a hundred percent, so let's get some answers.
Yeah, and as we go through P and C, we'll need to note some of these. We're gonna require a fire station or something, then we'll want to know.
What about, uh, egg exempt buildings?
Not a residence, new residence.
It wouldn't be.
Unless it's considered commercial.
Egg buildings going.
We don't get an egg exempt to commercial.
Okay.
And have five acres or more, right?
Them together, let's get this to their attorney and. Get some answers, send it on to me and I will.
Anything else, Sinda?
That was all of mine, except for the.
Everybody good?
Waiver on, on the, the four peoples whose house burns down.
Hopefully nobody.
Well.
Hopefully nobody.
Unfortunately, impact fees impact everybody at a different, in a different level, you know, I mean, it's. The affordability piece is why the county's not doing it, because affordable housing is so hard to come by anyway. Who knows, we'll, we'll see what that looks like moving forward, but I just know that this code is very precise. And we don't want to be the ones administering that code, let them do it, we are collecting fees.
But I think we need to help the building department out if they have concerns or questions, it should be. You know, if you don't get any more of them, then come back to us and we'll try and dig it out for you.
We're just gonna, you know, if they're mad, we're gonna send them right to them.
Yep.